Have a great show, everybody. Good morning. Welcome to the February twenty twenty four meeting of the Saint Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. We'll start with some introductions. We do have a quorum of trustees present. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president.
John Johnston, vice president.
Judith Gwen.
Sharon Fitzsimmons.
John Walters.
Tressa Semler, treasurer.
Thanks, everybody. Good to see y'all. First item of business is the approval of the January twenty twenty four minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes. If anyone would like to so move.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the January minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. We can entertain a motion to approve them.
I have a question on page one.
Okay.
About five up from the bottom. Where it says mobile library, that's insurance add-on. Is that nineteen ninety-five? Monthly or?
That's um annual, that's that's for half of the year. It's the new insurance for the mobile library. So we've had them on standby to add it as soon as we got the library itself. So as soon as we got it in December, they added us to their insurance. Yes. We are usually billed around June, July.
We also have a question about the Norad Media Center. What Norad Media is a media company that creates like videos and things like that?
They They did the Langston Hughes Black History Month on this past Saturday.
Okay.
Yes. For Lexi and Hall. Those are the ones that we've been talking about. We had them ordered and they're working on installing them at the moment.
Have a great show, everybody. Good morning. Welcome to the February twenty twenty four meeting of the Saint Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. We'll start with some introductions. We do have a quorum of trustees present. My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president.
John Johnston, vice president.
Judith Gwen.
Sharon Fitzsimmons.
John Walters.
Tressa Semler, treasurer.
Thanks, everybody. Good to see y'all. First item of business is the approval of the January twenty twenty four minutes. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Anyone would like to so move?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the January minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. We can entertain a motion to approve them.
I have a question on page one.
Okay.
About five up from the bottom. Where it says mobile library, that's insurance add-on. Is that nineteen ninety-five? Monthly or?
That's um annual, that's that's for half of the year. It's the new insurance for the mobile library. So we've had them on standby to add it as soon as we got the library itself. So as soon as we got it in December, they added us to their insurance. Yes. We are usually billed around June, July.
We also have a question about the Norad Media Center. What Norad Media is a media company that creates like videos and things like that?
They They did the Langston Hughes Black History Month on this past Saturday.
Okay.
Yes. For Lexi and Hall. Those are the ones that we've been talking about. We had them ordered and they're working on installing them at the moment.
On page two, about in the middle of the page.
John, can you talk up just a little bit? I can't hear you very well. Sorry.
On page two, just below the middle of the page, PNC miscellaneous supplies, two numbers, twenty-eight hundred each. I'm sorry.
That's the credit card that we also talked about last month. It's a one-time credit card payment that I make every month.
On page, on page three. The Blue Crop. Blue Shield Insurance Payment of forty-three thousand and change. Tell us a little bit about that.
That's our health insurance for all of our employees, also paid every month. Sometimes we have it two in one month, depending on when the county gives us the bill.
I have no more questions.
So how about that motion? Can we get a motion to approve the EALs?
So moved.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Dorothy. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Motion carried. Moving down our agenda, we do not have the treasurer's report. We'll be waiting with bated breath until April. So let's move on to John and the Smurla.
Only thing to report this month is that the next meeting of the board is February twenty. And I see that the board retreat is listed there for the for April night.
And that's open to all trustees? Would that be open to all of us or?
Yes, that's that's for everybody. If you're able to attend, and we'll get you more details about the the exact time, but it will be at Smurla up in Charlotte Hall.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, that date again, I missed it.
It's on the it's on the agenda. It is April ninth.
Four nine, thank you.
Thank you, John. Let me turn it over to Michael for some celebrations.
All right, well, I'd like to introduce a couple people who may not be quite so familiar to you. And Brian Youngs is here. Hmm, Brian. Can you still hear me? Brian Youngs is here from the Lexington Park Library. He's in the Lottie program and is part of that program which helps people learn library and skills. He is required to attend a board meeting, so he is here to observe this one. Is that welcome, Brian? Also, there is Brittany Cornish, and Brittany, we are celebrating today because she has finished her Master of Library and Information Science degree. So.
We have three hip hip arrays this morning, and those are for Sandy Christ, our HR, or I'm sorry, our outreach coordinator, for Rosa Nakamoto, who also works in outreach, and for Belinda. And these are for the organization of the Mobile Library Ribbon Cutting. So thank you for your excellent planning, organizational efforts, and partnership with the county to execute the Mobile Library Ribbon Cutting Celebration. Your efforts led to a successful event which introduced the mobile library to Saint Mary's County. Well done. We thank you for your outstanding service. So thank you so very much. A number of you were able to attend. It really was a lovely day, and at long last, we have a ribbon cutting at Leonard Town
of some kind after many, many years of not being able to do them. That was a very good thing.
Yeah. Michael, can I just know before you move on, first, congratulations to Brittany. That is a huge accomplishment in the midst of your career and life and everything else. So kudos to you. And the Mobile Library event, I know many of us were able to attend, and it was a fantastic event. Just the turnout was great. The leadership from the county, it was so great to see everyone come. Everything went really smoothly. The cookies were fantastic, and it was just a really special moment. So kudos to you all for making that happen.
Michael, a sidebar to the event. I happened to wind up sitting next to the guy who is the County Public Works Director. And we got to
Jim Gotch?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we got to chatting, and I asked him to come into the lobby and take a look at our traffic cone and its problem. He said he would do that. Do we know if he did do that inspection after the event?
The, I do not know if he did personally. I was out on the mobile library and talking with people. The county has been aware of that for some time, in fact.
He admitted to that, yeah.
And we have a request to fix that and and the cone out front as well, and there's quite a few other things. Just to give you one example, since October at the Charlotte Hall Library, we got an ADA request to modify the desk to make it sort of accessible. And that's kind of something that we legally have to respond to, but because the county owns the building and has oversight of the desk, we haven't been able to do that. So we, they are behind in a number of things. I believe that's largely because of being understaffed in part, but also because of a massive amount of work going on at the corrections facility. So it's keeping them very busy. My hope is that at some point we're going to get to that. Fixing that, I do know that that's not the only area in the Leonard Town Library where there are issues. I, I know that Grimmon Parker, the architect for it, set down a structural engineer to look at that library within the last week. I think the problem may be that when we did the original pad for it to pour the concrete, it was washed out three times by hurricane remnants. That location does seem to have a curse on it, and I don't know if that, even though they, you know, they packed it down, they did their best. The construction company, you know, that might have been an issue there. I'm sure it's not a design flaw. There's, you know, Grimmon Parker has done many, many buildings, and they've never seen this before. So we we know that they're a little behind and we're sympathetic to them trying to catch up. But yes, I do not know if he actually came out that day.
Thank you.
In that case, we'll move right along because we're waiting, and it should be just about another minute or two here to be joined by Asset Strategy, and they're going to review the materials that they gave you. And I've asked them to try to restrict it to fifteen minutes, allowing for your questions. They're going to give you a high-level overview of these and not go through page by page by page, you know, when you've got a summary page document in front of you. So we'll go ahead and take a look at our budget. With sixty percent of the year passed by, we are, as last month, pretty much in tolerance for most of the areas. There's a few that have been overspent, but not by much. And we'll have to do, you know, a budget reconciliation at some point to keep those up to date. There is one thing I'd like to draw your attention to, and it's on the last page. At the very top of page ten, admin FOL, that account. We are going to spend that money. We have some money set aside for security upgrades, and I'll be telling you more about that later. But we're going to start a project here at the Lexington Park Library. There's many stacks that are quite simply too tall, and so we're going to, we've got an estimate to reduce the size and do the end caps, again, create greater visibility in the library and just frankly, a more interesting aesthetic. We don't have enough funding to do the Charlotte Hall Library for that project, unfortunately. So we'll have to look at that later. Plus, we are looking at doing a major renovation of Charlotte Hall in the future. So so we do wish to spend that money, and the FOL is aware of this project and approves of it. So that's kind of where that, the bulk of that is going to go. And that project will probably be ongoing for several months here, but we hope it will be done before the end of the fiscal year. So any questions about any of the budget lines that you see there?
I just had a question about the security cameras. They didn't come out of the security line, it looks like. So did they come out of the FOL?
No, they came out of the IT budget.
Okay, thanks.
And we did get additional cameras, as we've discussed with you, to cover some areas that were not previously covered well. We are able to install the security cameras ourselves in the building. We do not have to have the county involved with that project, and Robert, Tim, and Jeff have gotten quite expert at it. So that is something that we can do, unlike some other things we'll talk about later for security that are really have to involve the county.
I remember you saying that some of the camera money did come from either FOL or trustees, not not us trustees, but the foundation.
I don't think any security money had.
We're going to use FOL money for the security cameras, but we found big money in the IT budget this year for them, and so we're going to use the FOL money for the security measure we will be talking about during the process.
Okay, so I did not pass hear that then. Thank you.
Are the, are the cameras tied to a contract with a security company with a monthly fee, or are these simply an internal closed-circuit system?
They're internal and that they record, and so we have access to the footage for a certain period of time, and then it gets recorded over. They are not handled by a security company, and we have the ability to log in and see all of them.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay, great. So if we could just hold this conversation then until we get our presentation from Asset Strategy, who are here.
Good morning.
Hi, John. Good morning. How are you?
Doing well. Hope, hope the meeting's going well so far.
So far, so good. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate your time.
Sure, and Al will be, Al Morrison will be joining shortly as well.
Oh, I think he's here.
Great.
So I understand, John, we have about fifteen minutes with you. So if you just want to take it away, we have a a number of printed documents in front of us. If you want to guide us in a conversation, that'd be great.
Sure. So let's see. What we can do is maybe start off by going to page fourteen. That's something where we kind of look at the portfolio level just to see where everything stands as of December thirty-first in accordance with the investment policy. So on page fourteen, there, you know, certainly eye-catching to look at the chart up top, and Al has joined us.
Good morning, everybody.
Hi, Al. Good morning.
Yeah, so just in the interest of time, Al, I was, I had just just begun to talk about page fourteen, but we can turn it over to you since you're gonna gonna speak to it.
Do you want to pull up the asset allocation piece from our proposal?
Um, sure. Is it possible for me to share a screen, please? Is that going to work?
Yeah, we can speak to it.
Okay.
And if you could tell us like the header of the graph that you were looking at, so we can make sure we're looking at the right one, that would be really helpful, too.
Sure. Yeah, on page fourteen, it's the asset allocation compliance. So I am trying to share, but I got host-disabled participant screen sharing. So yeah, if that's, it's probably not critical for us to do this.
It should work now.
Oh, okay. Oh, you did. Thank you. Okay. Let me just
John mentioned, what we wanted to do was recap all the transactions from last November, where we implemented all of the approved changes to the to the portfolio. And John, if you go back to the asset allocation page.
Um, well, they're looking at that on hard copy.
Hard copy. All right.
Yeah.
So if you have the hard copy, let me just again recap particularly asset classes that were changed, asset classes that we moved funds from one asset class to the other. So if we come down the list, particularly, let me focus on several that were just eliminated. So emerging markets had a five percent target, as you note, to the left, and had no assets. So that asset class was eliminated. You can come down to high yield, same scenario, a target of five percent, but no assets. So that was eliminated. And then in the the REIT category, we move the Schwab passive REIT into the small-cap manager, which is Fuller Thaler, with the backdrop that small-cap stocks tend to hold REITs, and we got REIT exposure through Fuller and Thaler. On the tips, we eliminated again a Schwab passive fund and moved that into the core fixed income, which is now Dodge and Cox, which replaced Midwest as part of the transactions in November. And then in the large-cap space, we added two active managers, you might recall, a large-cap value manager, Coho, and a large-cap growth manager, Edgewood. So all that has been completed. And let me stop there for any questions again on all the changes in asset classes, allocation, and and managers.
Sharon, do you want to jump in?
I thought we had discussed Edgewood and Coho and decided with a different, to go with a different management, but I defer to John on this one because I'm not sure my memory is correct.
Um, no.
My age about memory.
Fair enough.
I do have a question about the core bond, and I recall asking this. Is there in that asset, is there any high yield?
There is some high yield. Dodge and Cox, primarily, it's significantly investment-grade. And we, I did take a look back over the years, you know, going back into twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty, up through now. The the effective allocation to high yield has ranged between five percent and ten percent during that time period. And, you know, by, you know, the prospectus guide, and then most funds like this, in their prospectus, the, you know, registration document that they file, it usually gives, it gives them, you know, the ability to go up to twenty percent. But that's mainly for flexibility. If there is a, you know, if it ever comes to the point where, you know, corporate bonds and high yield are so oversold that they're screaming bargain, would they even get close to that? So really, it's good to look at what their history has been, and the range is between five and ten percent in high yield. So you're getting, the rest of it is all investment-grade.
And yet, if we eliminated the high yield as an independent asset class, why would we get into something that not only had it, but could go as high as twenty percent, and we'd never know it?
Okay, well, the the idea is, is that the invest, the look at the investment managers, fixed income investment managers who live and breathe the the bond market every day and are always strategically looking at what is the best relative value between corporate bonds, investment-grade bonds, and high-yield bonds, as well as mortgage securities, agency securities, treasuries, and so they're the ones best equipped from day to day to be able to make the calls about the allocation versus and committee that might meet, you know, and I'm talking generally with clients, not just you, committees that meet quarterly and, you know, are not you know, not necessarily ready to be making those kinds of allocations. So we we did this more, we didn't necessarily eliminate, or as said, that we didn't want to have investments in high yield. The idea was to transfer that allocation decision to the investment manager. And the the, you know, again, looking at the, looking at the asset allocation to high yield that they're making, you know, looking at what they're effectively doing, you know, a five to ten percent allocation within their fixed income portfolio is effectively what they've done. You know, I would posit that they probably have never gotten up to twenty percent in high yield, and the only time they would do that, again, is if it is on sale at such a bargain price.
Well, I just find it a little disingenuous that we eliminated that as a standalone where we could see it and then turned around and buried it in a so-called core bond fund where we don't. And I'll leave it at that. We can move on now.
Okay.
Okay.
And we can always update the committee on, you know, on each meeting in terms of where they're currently at with fixed income and what their, what their outlook might be.
Can we continue the kind of general presentation in the interest of time, and then we can tackle any questions at the end?
Sure.
Thank you.
So Al, on page fourteen.
So again, this ties into our compliance responsibility, and you can see to the far right that we are currently in the ranges of how we can allocate. The only issue John and I wanted to raise is that we are underweight fixed income. And with the direction of the fixed income markets, particularly second half of this year, when it's projected Fed will start to lower rates, that we would want to get back up to our target because the fixed income market is evolved to being, again, productive at a great two thousand thirteen. And the rule of thumb, as rates go down, returns go up. So that's something we would like to accomplish, again, bring it back up to target.
That's something you all would just do on your own because that's within the ranges that we've approved, correct?
I don't know if we have authority or discretion to do that. We, if you want to give us that discretion, we can certainly do that routinely, which is certainly easier than, and not as timely once a quarter. That'd be fine.
I don't think per our IPS we can give them discretion. But where would you, where do you propose to uh slice something off?
I'm sorry, John. Let's hold on the questions for now. Can y'all just continue, please, and then we'll circle back at the end?
Okay. All right. Next, we're going to go into a quick recap of performance, starting on page fifteen. And you see for both the quarter and the full year, certainly back into double digit returns, ten and a half for the quarter, fifteen percent for the one year. And then you can see the uh the peer ranking in the peer universe up above the health and welfare peer universe that we utilize to uh plot.
And just to and just to note that the uh parents, the numbers, parenthetical numbers next to the, for example, under three months to total fund and the target, that is the ranking that's being illustrated up above in that floating bar graph.
So any questions on the annualized returns? If not, page sixteen, just a couple of points oversight. We'll be looking at our calendar year returns. And particularly the spectacular markets in nineteen twenty and twenty one, where you can see the uh double digit returns. And I looked at the three-year performance number at the end of twenty twenty one during that three-year time period, we returned fourteen point three. And then we know twenty twenty two came on the horizon and uh we certainly paid the price like the rest of the investing world. Then to close, one chart we always put a lot of value in is on seventeen, where we get away from quarterly, one year more short time periods. These are three-year rolling periods. And you'll see in every time period, we are above median, in many cases up in top quartile with the exception of twenty twenty two because of uh the calendar year twenty twenty two. So a good uh representation of the consistency in the return stream over these multiple time periods. Any question there? John, you want to jump in quickly on maybe scatter chart and and see if we have time to talk about managers?
On page twenty, um, this is where we look at the um, risk and return of the total portfolio compared to its target. And it also how it compares to its peer group. So the orange dots are the peer group members, uh, the health and wealth welfare funds that you're being compared with. And then we have the total fund in the blue square, the target in the green triangle. And what this shows is is that your return on the on the left axis it over time for three years and five years is well above most all the members. Um, but also the risk um by comparison is also relatively higher, the standard deviation. So that's around um twelve to fourteen percent. And uh, you know, so what this compare and what this notes is, is that your asset allocation is um a lot more like a a long-term fund that doesn't have any cash flows coming out of it, doesn't have to meet its liabilities to pay at this point in time, whereas the other members of the peer group are actively, you know, making their support payments out to its constituents. And that's why your um return and risk um are both higher than the members, but it doesn't necessarily mean that this is bad. Just means that you're different than um that group. And your returns are um probably well within your actuarial um targets that the actuary is providing for you. So Al, I'll let you take it away on taking a look at page twenty one.
So twenty one, we get into a what we call the executive summary. We can look at the total portfolio, the asset classes and specific managers. And as we come down, you can see the new managers Coho, Edgewood, they came in in November, so there's no performance history. You can go out to the far right from inception for the four or five weeks they were in. Edgewood being uh our more aggressive manager, return nineteen percent, ninth percentile. Coho is very defensive, does not keep up in big momentum markets. Still return twelve percent, but it's slightly in the bottom half of the peer universe. The uh active managers get into small cap. You can certainly see our fuller failure, you know, continues to perform very well. Fifteen percent for the quarter, eleventh percentile, twenty-two percent for the full year. We picked up the opportunity in the rising uh market environment in twenty twenty-three, eighth percentile. MFS is our one laggard. It is our international manager. Certainly is one of the more aggressive. Excuse me, I meant uh defensive managers. So case in point, when you look at its standard deviation, it's in the eighth percentile of the foreign blend peer universe, which means it's ninety-two percent less volatile. So again, a fund that does very well in down markets and will will lag in up markets as we can see here for the full full year, where I go out to their long-term history. Example, for ten years, they're in the seventh percentile of the peer universe. So we don't have any real issues with MFS. They are behaving as we would expect, knowing their historical patterns on when they are challenged in the markets and then the market cycles, particularly in uh very rebound rallies, lower quality, where they're gonna gonna lag. Then finally, the last page here on twenty-two, Dodge and Cox was again added in November. Let me give you some of the the numbers, since we don't have the full uh quarter, doesn't plot. But for the uh, for the full year, was in the first percentile. We go out for the ten years. The rationale for them being selected in the third percentile. So a fund that uh historically has been very balanced and has had more consistency in returns than our predecessor fund, the the Met West. Let me stop there, John. Anything you want to provide before we return back to any questions from the committee?
Uh, no, nothing from me. That concludes our paired remarks. So if there are any other questions that you'd like us to address, we're we're here to help.
Right. I think we have, I think John has a question here.
Yes, John.
Did you, did you hear that? John asked, is there a reason why we're carrying cash?
Ah. Let's see. Um. That is a good question because I don't see cash listed as a.
It's not an asset class approved, but there's always going to be some residual cash.
There is some cash, yes. Um, well, you know, like I said, we, so because we're not discretionary managed um consultants, um, we are not necessarily looking at um things all the time if uh, so I would imagine that uh this is prob, we would probably want to just take this cash and put it back into Dodge and Cox.
And go going forward, correct to assume we can take care of the rebalancing without.
Can can y'all hold on on the Zoom? I don't think anyone can hear what John Walters is saying.
No.
That's fine. Let's bring it up. Hello?
Can you hear us?
Hello?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Question mark then. If we apply cash to the fixed income to get it back to temporarily perfect, will the amount of cash do that? And if not, where are you going to suggest that be trimmed to uh reduce an overreach in one place and build something up where we are lagging?
Yes, and uh we are overweight by three percent in large cap, eight tenths of a percent in small cap. So we will pull money out of the cash, which is only going to get us uh three tenths of a percent, and the balance will come from our domestic equity.
Primarily, most of it would be coming from the Schwab um index fund. And perhaps um another uh remaining amount from the Fuller and Thaler fund. Any other questions?
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I I have a question on the the Coho of plus page twenty-six, the Coho Relative Value Equity versus US Large Cap.
Uh huh.
So um, three out of six were below, well below our target. Are you recommending any changes to that?
Okay, bear with me just to get.
Page twenty-six.
Page twenty-six.
Let me probably a little background on Coho, their style, as I mentioned earlier, very, very defensive. So an example, I look at their performance over the last two years in two thousand twenty-two, when the market was.
And and you can look at their um annual performance on page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So you can see they were in the twenty-fifth percentile, only lost three percent versus the peer universe at almost six. And uh, in twenty twenty-three, when the market rotated, they did not participate as well. So on the prior page, it's on page twenty-six. It's a two percent return and they're down the bottom two percent. And as we look at the last five years, particularly, the market was dominated by very high growing opportunities. The uh higher risk profile managers do the best. So nineteen and twenty twenty-one were banner years. And when we have market cycles where a high risk type of securities are leading the market, Coho is not designed to participate in the upper uh quartiles. It is always very defensive and the matchup with Edgewood, which is the two managers that we added. It's a mirror opposites. Edgewood is the growth component. That's higher standard deviation, higher up market. And when we compare the two in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, just to give you the good example, in twenty twenty-two, Edgewood lost forty percent, Coho lost three. In twenty twenty-three, when the market rebounded and we had growth dominating, Edgewood made forty percent and Coho made two. So we always want to have a manager in our large cap space that their style will do well in one type of market cycle. So when we have downward markets in eighteen and twenty-two, Coho will do very well. When we have big momentum markets, Edgewood will do better. And when you average them out over a long cycles, it's a uh less volatile use of the large cap asset classes. And we don't want to be captive of any one sub-style because when you rotate out of their style, you know, then we're in a cycle where we'll be underperforming with that particular manager for a period of time. John, you want to add any of that to that?
Uh, and the only thing I would add to it as well is that um, you know, this is a three-legged stool. So besides the active value and growth managers in large cap, we also have that Schwab Broad Market ETF, which is, you know, certainly um giving the tot, the large cap portfolio that index exposure to the magnificent sevens of the uh of the large cap area where, you know, the those seven stocks have accounted for well more than uh, you know, forty percent of the total return of the S and P five hundred. And um, you know, whereas the rest of the S and P five hundred has had a very low return last year. So um, we think with, you know, these three managers, these three funds that are in there um, uh total the large, that large cap equity um portfolio is um, you know, it's going to keep pace or exceed uh the S and P five hundred over over time.
I I think our time is wrapping up, but I wanted to go to Sharon first.
So I I'm sorry, I don't have uh the previous presentation in front of me, but I thought when we started talking about moving that you recommended Coho and Edgewood and we had scatter plots like this that showed that Coho and Edgewood did not perform as well as some of the other funds or the fund managers. I thought we had that scatter plot and we decided to look at some of the other options instead of Coho and Edgewood because of this specifically that they did not perform as well.
Hmm.
Does that, no one else has that memory?
I mean, I I believe that we several months ago, we ended up voting on their recommendations to accept them. And so I I do think.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there was a discussion.
Yes.
And I think John did the research that they are not performers that we were impressed with. So again, my question to asset strategy, which you didn't answer, was the Coho large cap is not, does not appear to be performing well. Do you recommend a change at this time or not?
Well, the two managers just started in November. So um, but you know, and what do you want? Are you telling us that you want to change the managers?
Well, what what do you, are you saying we're going to have a three-month mark and and we can reevaluate? We have data at three months.
We would never evaluate a manager at three months.
Well, we have data at three months.
It's too short of a time period.
But I'm not asking that. I'm saying, will we have some data at three months?
You'll have data for three months at the next quarterly meeting.
Because right now it's blank.
Correct, because they didn't have a full quarter of performance ending December thirty-one. They were uh implemented in the month of November. And so, you know, this time period is probably um forty-five days or something such as that, that they were in the portfolio. So um, now, um, so I don't have in front of me the, we don't have the three months and the December thirty-one.
So what's our three-month mark? February?
No, we we always report quarterly. So we're going to, when we do the March thirty-one report, um, you know, in the May meeting, that's where we'll see a full quarter to see what they, to see what they did then.
I guess we can reevaluate then.
Yeah, all right.
Let me add a little color to that.
I think we need to leave it there. Uh, Al, we need to leave it there for now. Um, I think we can certainly come up with some questions that might be helpful for us to understand for your next presentation.
But we'll take time on the other two managers.
We do really appreciate your time and energy today.
Okay. Thank you all. Great, great seeing you all again.
Thanks so much.
Have a good afternoon.
You all, take care.
All right, to return where we were, we were looking at the fiscal year twenty-four budget. I had mentioned that we are going to spend down the admin F O L fund and that should help provide some clarity come the audit because there will not be as many restricted funds for this year if those are gone. Um, so that is my hope anyway, and uh we should in any case be spending this money in a timely fashion. The friends will not be giving us a check this fiscal year. They will be waiting until next fiscal year to give that to us. Um, so um, do you have any questions about any of the budget lines and uh Sharon had asked about, I believe, where the camera money came from and we we said that that's going to come from the I T budget. Any other questions about any of the budget lines?
If the friends are not giving us a check this fiscal year, does that affect anything operationally?
No, they're going to give it to us in July. Uh, it'll be after the, after the end of this fiscal year. So again, when we look at the audit next year, it will be, there will not be restricted, as many restricted funds sitting there that might sort. It will be, there will not be restricted, as many restricted funds sitting there that might sort of, so it looks like you've got money. Well, actually, that's restricted, so hopefully that we can clarify some of that with the audit then. Uh, hearing no other questions, I'll move right along. To the fiscal year twenty-five budget process review. Uh, the budget as approved by you was submitted to the county on January thirteenth. Uh, and. They uh review it and get back to us and they did have one suggested. Um, addition, we had not provided an E C C form and you you saw how long that thing was. For the fact that we were looking at a decrease in healthcare costs, insurance costs for for Charlotte Hall, so they wanted that. Um, but otherwise, it was pretty much right on target. Um, one of these years, we're gonna get one where they have no changes. Um, that is my goal. Um, but they tell me that every department has something that they review, so that is submitted. And at this point, what's going to happen is the county commissioners are going to be looking at it. Um, they are having budget work sessions and I tend to go to those starting this month, so just kind of follow the process and I'll keep you up to date. And we'll have our hearing uh where they'll give us an initial idea of what they are intending to give to the library. And then um there will be the budget uh public hearing. That we will attend and um depending on the news we get in March, it will either be um. Trying to bring out many supporters and ask for. Uh, more consideration than we might have had, or bring out our supporters and just say thank you so very much for. Uh, supporting your library. So um at this point, it's in their hands and we'll just see kind of what we get to in what we know is a tough budget year. Um, we've had the asset strategy update, um and I'll have something uh. A letter from Bolton to discuss with you under new business. Um. The strategic planning update, um we have conducted eight. Sessions and some of you went to those. Um. Uh, many of them for the public and and taken notes on those. There is an engagement page and so far it has had. Eight hundred forty-seven views, seven hundred and five page visits. Um. And there's been spikes when we've been promoting it. So so far, we've got seventy-five completed surveys. Forty-eight tell us what is important to you responses, twenty-five big ideas. Thirteen show us where you'd like service responses and seven public forum comments and. Been talking with the folks at Library IQ and also uh with Laura. About another effort to get the word out about this. We're going to do a press release to try to get it into the media. Um, if you have not taken our survey a- as a trustee or submitted a big idea, please do, you are absolutely eligible to do that. Um, for a county of our size, call it a hundred and fourteen thousand, we'd like to have as many as four hundred responses. Um, the more we get, the more statistically um accurate it will be um representative it will be. So we're going to do another reach out. Um. And especially if you know people who are not library users, um and this goes for our branch managers as well, please encourage your staff to continue. With likely supporters to give that form out that we've not presented to the public, say, please, you know, do participate in this. So um. We're on track to close the comments period out in probably early March. And at that point, then we will begin to have Asset Strategy compile a draft of the strategic plan. Which will be shared with stakeholders and obviously including you for comment and. They'll be doing the final presentation for you of what their recommended strategic plan is, which. You won't have to accept that if you want changes to it or you want, you know, other things. Um, but they'll do a a final presentation to you with all their data and the information they've gathered and what their recommendations are.
Michael, is this on track for what Library IQ is expecting for responses or are we under or over?
They'd like to see more.
Well, is it that they'd like to see more or that they expect?
They would like to see more. I mean, there, when when you go into it, there's no expectation for it. It's gotta be this. They they'd like four hundred and we'd like to see four hundred too for just to have it statistically valid. I I will say that um. The. Public sessions, um the the focus groups gave them something to think about. I'll give you a specific instance. We had one with the educators. And the people of the school said. It's working great. Don't mess it up. And they said, that's the first time we've ever heard that. Usually when you hear from educators, they say, we never even talked to the library, what's going on? So um, thanks to Jill and Sarah especially, who interface more with the schools directly. But to all our users as librarians, I think we've got a great partnership going there and. Um, they, you know, as I say, as I, Library IQ was incredibly impressed with that. Um, so what they're telling to. Us right now is that. In many instances, we talk to a librarian, we say, you shouldn't try anything big, you should get the basics sorted out. Our basics are sorted out in this library. So we're going to be able, I think, uh obviously budget dependent, to be looking at some initiatives that would be new. Um, so uh that's, I think, good news we're hearing from them and they've worked with over a thousand libraries. I don't think they're just. Just, you know, snowing me here. I think that they're truly impressed with what they've found so far. Um. A legislative update for you. Um, I've given you a. Listing of all the bills that have come forward so far that are related to libraries. And I'll review those with you briefly and entertain questions. Um, some of these, I'd I'd say we would be neutral on. Um, some of these, I. I think we should be strongly supporting and some we should be opposing. As a library, um, but I'll be. Meeting with legislators, I do submit testimony as to as does every other director in the library systems in Maryland submit testimony. On these bills. It's a kind of a cumbersome process. You can only submit. Two days ahead of time for a limited period of time and you have to have an account that you log into, but we we are doing that. Um. So Senate Bill one sixty-three. Is the Imagination Library Program for Charles County. The Imagination Library is funded by Dolly Parton's foundation. It gives free books to children aged birth through four. And last year, we had a bill that would have benefited Saint Mary's as well. Um, this year, the only bill that's come forward on that and that none of those bills passed last year is for Charles County alone. Um, it would be more interesting for us if it had anything to do with us, so I was not even gonna comment on that one frankly. Um. S Bill two forty-eight.
I'm sorry, Michael.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I know, but the Dolly Parton Foundation, they give away books free. So what's the funding for?
That would fund giving the books to the children of Charles County, that bill.
I mean, is Dolly Parton Foundation providing the books?
Uh, no, you have to pay for them. I mean, they're at a very low cost, but it's not something they give away.
Oh, okay, but I mean, individually, she does give away books free. But that's to the individuals.
Yeah.
So this is more of a corporate kind of, okay, so we have to buy the books.
You you have, you have to match. They should just give them away. You have to match the funding. Um, I don't know the answer to that, but I believe that's the, that's the answer.
It's only for kids of Charles County.
Yeah, it's only Charles County, it's not us, so you know.
So they're buying books at a discount. And then they'll be giving them away free to.
So you help pay for the books, but then the the end result is to give them away free to the kids. The children do not pay at all.
Right, great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um. Uh, Senate Bill two forty-eight, John, um, uh probably has had discussions about Ashley. It relates to the regional resource centers, Smurla in our case. Last year, they put a bill forward to change the board structure. And a last-minute amendment from somebody who wasn't even one of the regionals changed it. What this will do will allow the three members from each county, so three members from Saint Mary's. It will no longer have to be two members from this library board. And one at large, it was going to be two at large and one member from this library board. So this is going to give Smurla more opportunity to look outside the library boards, possibly look for some diversity. Or certainly kind of different voices and um we uh we're supporting this one. Senate Bill two fifty is just a a clarification in language. We already cannot charge fines to minors. Um. And we haven't been able to do that for quite a few years. So um we can still uh get replacement um, replacement fees. Um. We cannot. Basically, charge a minor replacement fee for an overdue library materials except under certain circumstances. It's it's, the bill's already there, it's just some language clarification, so it's not going to change our operations at all. Senate Bill three fifty-five, an act concerning display of obscene materials to minors, a prohibition. This relates to school libraries and not to public libraries. Nevertheless, um the Maryland Library Association is not in favor of this one. And. I would simply point out practical issues with it. A number of states have tried passing this kind of legislation. And every single one of them have tripped over something called the First Amendment. And those have not stood. And if this were to pass, I think it would set Maryland up for expensive leg- uh um legal action against it. And that defending it would be very difficult to do. It has only one sponsor as presented and I don't think it's going to pass. S Bill four thirty-four, we do want to support most strongly. This is an increase in funding for the State Library Resource Center. Or SLURC, because Maryland doesn't have enough acronyms. SLURC provides a lot of the databases that we use. It provides training for staff. It is responsible for the interlibrary loan program, so if we get something sent to us outside the county, that's who's handling that. It has a collection of one million Maryland-related items. That it in part digitizes. Um, so that's an important um resource for all Marylanders, but it does support quite a bit of things that we do. And they put up a funding request increase last year and it didn't get out of committee. So we're really doing a lot of work this year to try to make sure this one passes. These databases go up in cost every year. So at some point, you're going to have to start giving things up. Um. And so, for example, a language database might have to go. Um. And we are hopeful that this one will pass.
That's a tough acronym.
Yeah, SLURC, yeah. Um. Senate Bill five ninety-one is about collective bargaining for libraries. Now, I have to be very careful what I say about anything related to. This bill because I'm a member of an administration. Um, I can do some clarifying on it for you. Um, it is not put forward by libraries. We did not ask for this. But I do not think that the Maryland Library Association opposes this. It doesn't say library systems have to unionize. It's not a pro-union bill. What it does is if a. Employees of system vote to have collective bargaining, it guides the process by which that will happen. And. How the union will come about, how it will work with administration, including it now includes you as the library board since you have oversight on so many things. Um, who will talk to who, it does prevent strikes and walkouts. So those would not be allowed. I should point out that. Uh, nobody would be required to be a member of the union if the staff were to vote to unionize. So you don't have to pay union dues or even be a member. Um, I'm going to, as I say, not say anything about this one because of my position. Other than to say that the Maryland Library Association is seeing that a number of the larger counties, we already have four systems that are unionized and they're they're mostly um in the central heavily populated areas. We're expecting to see at least one more move forward. Um, so they just want something in place that will guide the process fairly. House Bill twenty-five is very similar to Senate Bill. Um, three fifty-five. It too um. Is trying to have. And again, this applies to school libraries primarily. Um. Uh. That that sexually explicit materials will not be in them and it will not contain graphic or obscene depictions of sexual activity. Um, again, this one has some problems with language and and standing up to a legal challenge. For example, the term age appropriate is completely subjective. And will vary depending on the child. Um. So the other thing is that no library, school library or public library in Maryland has anything that could be legally defined as obscene. There's a three-part test for that. You have to consider the work as a whole, if it has artistic merit. Or scientific merit. Um, and you cannot, you know, pick out individual parts and say that's obscene. So if it were obscene, it would not be legal to sell it. Much less have it in libraries. So again, uh, this one's problematic. I'm not going to take a stand specifically against it, other than for problematic reasons. I think if it were to pass, that it would create. Expensive lawsuits against the state of Maryland for having it. And again, um, it has only one sponsor. I think it's well-intended. I I'm not faulting the intent of the person putting this forward. I just don't think it's going to pass and that if it does, it would create legal issues. Senate Bill three seventy-eight. Is the opposite of those two bills that wish to restrict library content. So what this one would do would say that. And it would apply to academic, public and state libraries. It would say they have to develop certain standards. As defined by Maryland code. For. The freedom to read in their collections. It would further say that. Libraries that do not develop those standards or that do not adhere to them. Could lose all their state funding. It will prevent any library employee who is doing their job, keeping materials in the library that are being challenged from being fired or otherwise disciplined. And. It. Raises the penalty for people who deliberately destroy library materials. Or check them out and hold them out if it can be proven that they're doing that deliberately. So this is the Freedom to Read Act. Um. I I should note some things that it does and some things that it doesn't do. Um. It doesn't dictate to libraries what they would have. It doesn't say your collection has to have this. Libraries would be absolutely free to continue collecting exactly as they do. It does not permit obscene or pornographic material in library collections. Titles may still be challenged. Nobody has to borrow an item they don't want to. It doesn't commit Maryland to a set of standards or principles as outlined by the American Library Association or anything outside of Maryland. So basically establishes principles for creating a responsible library collection, protects us against deliberate theft. Protects library staff for doing their work within the policies procedures outlined by their organization. And it protects libraries as they continue to defend against unconstitutional censorship. So.
Think it's likely to pass?
It has many sponsors. Um. There's an interesting story behind it. Governor Moore's office came to Maryland libraries and said, Illinois passed this, why not us? There are seven other states that are putting this legislation forward now. I think it's going to pass, yes. Will it affect our operations? No. We already have everything in place to keep us in compliance with this law when it passes. So we don't have to do anything other than. When it passes, we'll have to look at exactly what. The code for how it defines, you know, what it specifically says. Um, so we'll have to have in our policy, um. Library material services and resources exist and should be provided for the interest, information, enlightenment of all persons in the library services. A library should not exclude material from its catalog because of the origin, background, or views of a person who created the material. A library should not prohibit or remove material from its catalog because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. We'll probably want those exact words from it in our policy, but we've already got something that says the exact same thing.
Does the policy for the this library's policy for reconsideration change at all?
No.
Okay.
We would not have to change that at all.
In those guidelines, I didn't know.
We're already within those guidelines. Yeah, and more more on that later on. But yes, we're already completely in compliance with this, our policies. Although one of them makes reference to the A L A, and we'll have to remove that because this is going to, again, refer only to Maryland standards. But no, we're 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 ready to do this. We are already doing this. And because of challenges happening in some counties, most especially Carroll County right now, where the school board has removed fifty books. We think that this is an important one to have in place. So those are the bills that are coming forward related to libraries. Any questions about any of them? No, it's in sort of the central northern part. The Eastern Shore has seen some challenges, but Carroll's been the most organized so far with the school board basically embracing the stand of Moms for Liberty.
Why don't, Michael, if you could give the update on bilingual resources, and perhaps then we'll take a break before.
Sure. Happy to do that. One of the goals that you gave me, and and I'm happy to embrace, but I just want to let you know that we're already doing this. So is it possible to bring up our website? And we're going to look in the upper right, and I believe we've showed you this before. Um, we are well built on bilingual. There are literally hundreds of languages you can display our website in. So Spanish is certainly one of those. I I think what we may want to do is add more signage and promote our bilingual resources more. But I just want to let you know that we have doubled the size of our of our titles in Spanish. And we we now have Rosa, who is bilingual in Spanish ordering. And could we go up there to recite? Yeah. And just maybe drop down and and look at one language we could do, and you don't have to choose Spanish languages. And it's one of those tabs up there. There you go. So any one of these languages you can do. And our website will display in those. And I'm always careful which one I choose because I've got very limited German and Swedish and very limited French. And if I'm afraid if I translate it, I won't be able to get it back. But there you go. So we have our collection. We've added eight hundred titles this year. Mobile library has three hundred and thirty-one on it now, and we've added. Uh, we've gone from having uh, about a thousand to one thousand eight hundred sixty-two titles in in Spanish. So I just want to let you know that I thought it was important that you would see that we're already making substantial efforts in that area. So I'm going to mark that one as done. Yeah, I I think we've got some work to do with promotion and and maybe some signage, but I I I think we've made a great start on this. And we do have an expert in selecting in that area. And I'm delighted to tell you that the response from the community has already been very good. What we're hearing is, oh, you're getting the books I want. Another thing we're considering is telenovelas. Does everybody know what a telenovela is? There is a database of telenovelas, and we're looking into providing that as well. So I think we're, I I think we're making good strides there. So that would, that's kind of what I have for your informational report, and then you said you wanted a break.
Yeah. All right. So I'll make a motion for a five-minute break. Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? All right. Let's keep it at a tight five, ten forty-six. We'll be back.
Yeah. Well, uh, thank you.
All right, everybody.
Reconvening. That over to action items, and the first is the personnel manual. Michael, please.
Uh, Michael, can you give us kind of the, can you remind us of the context of how we've gotten to this point with this document?
Sure. The original document, a personnel manual was reviewed by a committee. And especially, and I thank them for their work, Belinda and Mary Ann and Amy, it was presented to me for changes and updates. It was then presented to the board. And since then, I've had sessions with two board members reviewing it and making suggestions. So this draft five incorporates all of those changes that the library administration feels should be agreed to. And practically all of them, period. So it was given to you two weeks ago. I hope everybody's had time to review it. And my understanding is that you're going to do an up or down vote on this. It has been a many-month process, and I think it's time to implement it.
Okay, uh, I am going to throw a motion on the table to kind of frame frame the discussion to approve this personnel manual with these edits as written.
Second.
All right. Let's have a discussion. Questions, comments? Can you point us to those two spots?
We have had this conversation before. It is perfectly legal. You have to state it in the manual. It's not in the code of Maryland. It doesn't state that there. It's on the website. You can find it. It is Maryland sort of regulations, but they don't specifically say that. I I have provided, I have provided that specific language to you through email. And I don't have it on the top of my head, but you have seen an email with Maryland's official Human Relations Department statement on that. It is perfectly legal. You have to have it in your manual. That is essential to protecting the organization in some instances. You must have it in your manual if you're going to do it.
Okay. Thank you, John.
So I mean, I, I, so the sticking point is that last sentence, if you don't provide two weeks' notice, you forfeit your leave. And there certainly could be circumstances where somebody's unable to give two weeks' notice. So I think that's the sticking point here. Yes, legally, the library can do that. We can do that. Question is, do we want to?
If we add it at the discretion of the director, does that solve that problem?
No, you don't want to do that because if you create exceptions, you open yourself to legal challenges.
But if people who are separating owe the library money for whatever reason, then I think it's an obligation to get that back from that person. That's in every organization.
But what do you mean, owe the library?
Whatever obligation or whatever they they would owe the the library for whatever. So where I work, if we're we're issued electronics, if we don't give those back, we're charged for those electronics at our separation.
Right.
So anything like that. But not everything is illegal that they would they do that it would.
But what this, but what this is saying is if you don't give two weeks' notice, you give one week, but you have three weeks of leave and you'll leave on the books.
They'd be able to use their, they'd be able to use their leave.
All three weeks of.
This this is not preclude that. They'd be able to use leave.
I also think that the employees will have notice of this requirement because it is included here, because this is now going to become the policy. Right? I also think that this specific question, to me, feels too detailed for us to be in the weeds on. And that these two sentences are things that I would defer to everyone on the team of.
Can I also say this is not a new policy? It's been the library's policy for the past forty years? So yes, our staff know.
Yeah.
Pretty insulting.
No, I I think I, you know, the way I read is not, there can be family circumstances where people can't get two weeks' leave. And that's my concern. Not that somebody just walks off the job, but there's a circumstance where they're unable to. So.
And that person would probably communicate that with us. Yeah. I, we have asked for this up or down as presented.
Are there other comments people want to make before we vote?
On the whole, anywhere?
Yes. On and anywhere.
So I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote necessarily down on it, but I think there's two important pieces that are missing here. And one is a basically an EEO policy. There is a policy on harassment discrimination, but it it's really not sufficient. We need, the library needs a standalone EEO policy that deals with all the EEO issues right down, right down from the federal level. So I think that's something that should be tackled this year. And the second one is twenty, I think it's two seventeen safety procedures. And Michael, I talked about this, about a more formal and structured way of tracking safety training, requiring safety training, especially for new employees, to ensure that they get. You know, there's, there's lifting, there's, there's walking, there's some ladders even in the library, there's trip hazards. Most of this comes over videos. OSHA provides it all for free. The county has OSHA and EEO training, mostly video-based, and they have a structured system where they can track every employee and that they've watched the videos or done the training, completed it. So those are two things I'd like to see strengthened and formalized so that, you know, God forbid, you have an employee injury. We've got, we've got really good documented formal system that we're training our employees. And on the EEO side, the same thing. And I think all employees should be receiving EEO training, and usually it's annually, as well as OSHA. It's usually annual training to a refresher. So that's what I'd like to see strengthened, but I wouldn't vote no if we can agree that's something that we need to tackle and bring on board later.
It doesn't need to be in this.
It doesn't need to be, and it could certainly be separate.
Yeah. And and I do think it's important to acknowledge, this is not the final Rosetta Stone of policies to never be changed forever and ever. You know, I think we'll continue to have these conversations. I think you're raising important points that should be addressed. Yeah.
Lot, the library already has.
We have a safety manual already that documents what the sort of the monthly reviews we do of things like earthquake drill or tornado drill. I'm on the county's health and safety committee. In fact, I'm the vice chair. Um, I've seen those videos and boy are they boring, but if you want them, um, we can provide them. There's mostly really common sense stuff, but that would be separate in that manual, I would argue, and not a part of this document. And we will, we will look at a more detailed EO manual, um, but I don't think it needs to be here.
And we also do have training that our staff must do. That are video based in a system that we trap.
Okay, it does address the east, the ocean, the, uh, safety issues.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have something? So. Well, I'm thinking more the lifting, the ladders, the trip hazards, those kind of things. So
You can add that.
I mean, if you, if you have those, then I don't know why they're not just referenced in here that we have a employee training base system.
Need to be referenced in here.
Yeah, because it's, it's just part of the onboarding package. It doesn't necessarily have to be in our manual. It's what we discuss as this is part of your onboarding package, the thing you must do. And that, and it can change. The videos you choose change. So we don't want them in this package. We change them yearly. Not necessarily what we've given them, but the videos are updated yearly. So we don't, we could change the name. We could decide to add more or take one away. There's no.
No, no, I mean, I don't mean that level of detail, but just the reference to, there's a training site package that you go to. And this is where you go to find your training.
But that's a, either that's a county or a state requirement anyway, that you have to do those types of training every so often anyway.
Right. Which we do with onboarding. That's part of the onboarding.
Right.
Which we don't put everything that we do on onboarding in this package. Cause that's just talking to the employees about what to wear and what they can do and how to take breaks.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the trustees before we vote? Okay. All in favor of the motion to approve this personnel manual as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed or abstained? Okay. So by individuals? Okay. Um, I will go first. I vote aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item, the director of goals documents.
I have a document for you here. Um, I had proposed some goals in January. And I received via email, um, board suggestions and I would like to combine and in some ways modify those. I still think, and this is at the bottom where it says director proposal, but overseeing the budget and the library appeal. Now just doing the budgets, my job, that doesn't have to be a goal. I still think that it's important that we have an appeal process and that we are actively advocating for this. And it's a tough budget year and getting an increase might be impossible. So I don't know if I can achieve that goal, but I'm not as happy this year with the responses we've been getting so far. Last year we were ahead in letters. Now I, I sent more to you just yesterday. But I'd like to see more of those and I'm enlisting your help, please. You may write yourselves. You may ask friends and relatives to write, but I, I've reached out to the foundation. I've reached out to the friends. The friends have it in their newsletter.
Michael, could we, could we really focus on the language of the goals here?
Sure.
I know there's so much to dive into with each topic.
All right. Oversee, basically, you know, I don't do that myself. And so some of the language just says oversee, or it's more kind of what my role actually is. For example, you, um, you know, increase bilingual resources. It should be something along the, on your goal number of five, it should be something like oversee collection policy to ensure an increase in bilingual resources. I don't collect them. I don't create the signs. I mean, so I think the language ought to properly reflect what my role in this is. And you can still, you know, you can, you can still say, all right, that's a goal. How would we measure it? The next one, um, working with consultants, trustees and staff oversee completion of their strategic plan. Again, that's my role. I'm not going to write it. But I will be ultimately responsible to see that it's done. And how do you measure the goal? Do we have one or not? The next one, oversee the creation of a mobile library schedule and review its operations. Your goal had said establish and track baseline metrics to the implementation and engagement of the mobile library. Sandy is going to be doing this. This is her job. My job is to look at what she does, evaluate it and make sure that the library is being used to its best potential. My job isn't to create those metrics. She's going to do that. So yes, we will be looking at that. We will report to you on the mobile library and its operations. But let's put the actual work of establishing and tracking the baseline metrics where it belongs. Next one might be a little bit more, um, problematic for some of you, um, but I will explain the reason why I say it. As necessary, review contracts for cost vendor expertise and excellence of service. And then specifically, working with the HR and finance coordinator, explore finding a replacement with a paycheck's payroll HR system. And explore unifying the official name in the organization of St. Mary's County Library. Your goal was to build up a three-year plan for recompeting library service contracts to ensure that the library is getting the best possible cost. I'd like to give you a couple of examples of why that is an unrealistic goal and a necessary one. Other than the health insurance, what vendor do we give the most money to every year at the library? Anyone want to guess?
Enlighten us with this.
Ingram. People we buy books from. Now, it's not going to make any sense to try to compete that and I'll give you reasons why.
But we have talked about trash services.
Service contract. We're buying a product.
Sure it is. Uh, well, if you can define to me what you mean then by service contracts. Is that just like trash? Because any service, I mean, for example, the, um, the, we have, uh, Dugan McKissick and Longmore, they're a service. We're not buying a product from.
Right. That's a service. That's right.
All right. So I invite you to come with me to the law office of Dugan McKissick and Longmere. The only people we could find.
This is not a combative process. We want to help set you up for success.
But you, you've given me a goal and I'm trying to explain why.
I know that, but Michael, I'm getting a lot of negativity coming in our direction.
Okay.
We are trying to set up goals to help advance all of our shared goals, see the library thrive. And we want to see you thrive and continue to do an incredible job leading this library system.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's look at the two specific things.
Let's look, I'm not, Michael, excuse me, I'm not finished.
Oh, go ahead.
Please let me finish. One of the things we've talked about is being responsible stewards of the library's funds and wanting to demonstrate to the commissioners that we are making the most out of every dollar that comes our way. The idea of doing these recompenses for service contracts, everything from legal services to trash pickup to the many, many things that happen every day here is to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck and to demonstrate that we are being good stewards. That's where this is coming from. We want to partner with you to come up with goals that are within reach, but that are going to help you advance the system and help you develop personally as a professional.
What I'm asking for you is that you then allow me to look at those that could be changed profitably? And I will tell you about those, but recompeting every single one makes no sense for a number of reasons. And I was going to explain, but if you feel that's negative back towards you, I do try to be respectful, but that is an unrealistic and unnecessary goal.
First of all, it says develop a three-year plan for recompeting. That would give you the freedom to choose which ones were profitable and which ones were not because it's developing a plan, not recompeting everyone. A lot of the reason we gave these suggestions is because they are measurable. One thing that we noticed in the goals is it's very difficult to give an assessment on a goal that's not measurable. Overseeing is something that's not measurable. Whereas the things that we've listed here are things that you can come back and say, I did this and here it is.
But in many cases, what you've said are not things I do. It's what somebody else does.
Often will take credit for something that someone else has done that you say, under my direction, this happened.
And for me, that language oversee precisely establishes that you can still say, did you do it or not? And I'm not going to pass the buck and say, oh, well, somebody let me down. But that's actually my role.
Right, but oversee from our perspective is not measurable. Did you, did you not? Well, you could say, well, I oversaw it, but it didn't happen. That's not, that's where we wanted the actual language to say that it was completed. It was established. You are returning the plan.
Well, I, um, I, I will go back to looking at develop a three-year plan. It should have qualifying language in it. It looks like to me that that's saying every single contract every time. And if I can return to Ingram, for example, I can illustrate to you why that would not be necessary. It is, we, we, we not only get materials from them, but they process materials for us as well. That's a service they provide. Yes. Yes. Well, actually we, um, we are doing that right now. Uh, we're piloting with Smurla to look at the trash service at Charlotte Hall. We are looking at a different vendor. So we want to see how that vendor does now. I'm not completely optimistic because I look at that vendor's comments on social media and what people say, and a lot of people say, I'm going back to waste management. But we do want to see other providing an effective service at a cost effective way. So we're already doing that one. Yeah. John, you don't have to use Emma as a library. I've told you that before. You don't have to. It took me forever to get established as a library. They said, you don't have to do this. And in fact, we're not required to use Emma as a library.
So coming back to these suggestions here. I think that kind of conversation could be included in the three-year plan that we've requested as one of your goals.
Um, I would like it more clearly stated than, than what it is. So I'm, you know, this is obviously subject to, um, reconsideration, but develop a three-year plan for, um, evaluating the library service con- contracts, um, competing on those where it is possible and feasible.
So I would come back to, it's not asking you to recompete them. It's asking you to develop a plan for recompetition.
Well, who's going to be doing the recompeting?
I, I agree. I think, I think the first thing you do is you identify all your service contracts. Which would include Verizon, which would include Breeze Line. Someday we may have an option to Breeze Line or Verizon. I mean, we, we can, we could drop. I think we have dropped Verizon and gone to, uh, voice over internet. If I'm not mistaken, right? So there can be options, but if you identify all your service contracts. And perhaps the last time they were competed. And then in your plan, you could make a notation of those that would be not possible to compete at this time, but they're at least on the list. And what we're doing here, it was sort of documenting for corporate memory, not personal memory. All our service contracts from the last time they were awarded, recompeted for corporate memory. And that keeps the library on the right business track. That's why this is a good business practice. Everything has been identified. We know the competition. We know how it was done. We know what the bids were. Or those that are not possible at that time. And that's the, that's the key to developing the plan.
So wouldn't that be an evaluation actually? I mean, is there a difference in? There is a difference in how you would use that term, recompeting and evaluating. So if you're evaluating and you have a list of this is costly, these are the services we have. We have evaluated them over the three years. And this is what we've come up with. These could possibly be, have a better price. These know this is, even though we pay more for this, it's a better service. So I don't see any problem with exchanging, using, evaluating instead of recompeting.
Well, I mean, you, you do want to recompete if it's possible. We also have the, we have the audit firm that we do tie with the county, but if the county's recompeting it, fine. If the county's not recompeting it, that's something we want to consider. So I think that's a part of within the plan. Some notations, but you do want to recompete possibly.
How about evaluating recompetition of the library service contracts?
I, I think that recompeting is contained within the second part of that sentence. You just said develop a three-year plan for evaluating the library service contracts to ensure that the library is getting the best possible cost. That's going to suggest that in areas where we could improve, we will try. So if, if you want that, that's going to be easy. My question will be, um, who's going to be doing the recompeting? And it looks like you're putting a lot of work on my staff, but, um, we will see what we can do for you. You're overstepping your bounds, sir. That is not the responsibility of the board. That is operational. No, you do not.
I don't think we need to go far down this road. I think that we are left with goal language, develop a three-year plan for evaluating the library service contracts to ensure that the library is getting the best possible cost. That seems to be something we can live with. And that is measurable.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, so just to clarify this, so my, what I have pictured is that one third of the contracts would be reevaluated every year, not everything every three years.
Understood.
To spread out the workload.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, understood. Um, it could be if contracts all come up for renewal at the same time in a year, a crunch, but we will see what we can do with that. Um,
Well, maybe renegotiate, well, then I would renegotiate that point.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, um, and I, I will tell you that many of our contracts are individual, that, you know, for example, um, Midwest tape, um, who provides hoopla. Nobody else does that. It's a service. So I'm not going to be able to recompete many of our contracts. Some of these database things, they're unique. No, sir, it is not. There is nobody out there. We know the library market. Nobody provides that service to libraries except for Midwest tapes hoopla. Nobody's doing it. No, there really isn't. With that particular. You're talking to somebody who's considered an international expert in library digital content. And if you think this is hostile, it's because you're challenging my expertise on something you know nothing about.
I'm sure, all right. I'm pretty sure that Michael understands what he's doing and knows where he can go with the resources that he needs. I'm willing to trust.
I think we are going far afield. Let's table this right now. Our goal is to walk out of this conversation with a list of goals that everyone is clear on. So far it looks like we got one. First one's the hardest. Good for us.
Um, so we will fill in that language under bullet point four. And you, you still have to approve all these. Uh, I understand that. Uh, bullet point number four, I would like to keep, um, those two in it, those two sub bullet points in it. Um, we do want to look at paychecks. They've made some improvements recently and we're much more happy with them. But we pay a fair amount of money for paychecks and that is something that I think we could recompete. The other thing is that our. Um, the other thing is that our name is the Saint Mary's County Memorial Library on some official places. And the Saint Mary's County Library in other official places. And in other things, it says the Board of Library Trustees. So I'd like to figure out some way, and we've been talking with um, our accountants about what that might take. Um, it may involve having a tax expert look at some things, so I don't want to do that goal this fiscal year. But we may need to set aside some money to work with a tax lawyer and the IRS to try to make sure. Because this change happened before I, I did it. I don't think they did as careful a job working at the IRS as they needed to.
So I, I think we can include those as like two A and two B under the board suggestion language.
Your goal was increase circulation by five percent over calendar year twenty twenty-four.
No, I was looking at goal two, the three-year plan for evaluating service contracts.
Oh, go ahead.
And then we will take the two elements you've identified with paychecks and the name of the organization. We can put those under the.
Yep.
Alright, so we're good.
Um, you asked of five percent increase in circulation. Um, that's difficult. Um, if we have a budget that is passed in June, taking effect in July. That does not include an increase in materials, that will be an impossible goal.
So that was a goal last year as well, and you, and you well surpassed.
It was easy, um, because we were coming out of COVID. And my aim was to try to reestablish circulation at a level before COVID. But in fact, if you look not just at Saint Mary's County Library, but at all libraries nationally and the IMLS chain. I charged this, there's been a big decrease in circulation in the last eight years. There's too many other competing things. Um, social media, uh, people aren't frankly reading as much and people aren't buying books as much. Um, so I think. We've already talked about how. Materials costs have gone up and our materials budget has actually shrunk the last four years. Now, it's about four years ago it did because we got no money from the county.
Right.
And tried to give money to the staff. So with a smaller materials budget. Um, and higher cost of materials. If we don't, I think, increase the materials budget next fiscal year. Seeing an increase in circulation, although digital probably will continue to climb. But it reaches a point where it won't because we too have limited resources there. So I think I'm perfectly happy to try to, to get you an increase in budget, although of course, you know, I can't make people check things out. Um, but I, I think it has to be accompanied by that as something that will allow it.
What is the growth rate for the county, do you know? In terms of population?
Uh, it's about two or three percent.
So can we set three percent as a goal?
Well, you'd be assuming that everybody coming into the county uses the library.
Yes, well, I would assume the same percentage of people coming into the county would use the library as the percentage of people who use the library right now.
The county growth is actually stagnant right now. Okay.
Seven?
Stag- stagnant, yeah. I mean, Leonard Town is going fast, but other areas are not, so. Yeah, so, um, and we're not seeing an increase in school registrations either, for example. So I, I, I think it's more you're going to be relying on your core users. But as I say, if we don't provide more materials, and I'm thinking specifically very popular ones. That an increase in circulation is going to be difficult, given the competition for eyes. And giving the reading trends in the country.
So, Michael, do you, what would be an appropriate goal regarding circulation? Knowing that we're entering this difficult budget season.
Or visits. I would also accept visits, library resource.
Library usage?
Yes.
Which could include a lot of things. It could, it could include the meeting rooms, people coming in and studying here, circulation.
Yeah, I don't know.
All of those things.
Yeah, we have all those numbers, so it should be easy to set measurables that. Would, would it be appropriate to have like a, like a target goal and then a stretch goal?
Michael, what are your thoughts?
Um. I guess I'd say that a. Increase in some of these areas is possible. But you'll have to factor in if you don't increase the materials budget. And you'll have to factor in if there is a resurgence of COVID next fall. I mean, there are so many things that could affect this. That I just don't know that you can say, here's the goal. And say, alright, you didn't get there, that's a failure.
Well, I think if there's a good faith effort and there are circumstances beyond anyone's control, whether a budget or COVID or whatever else, you know.
Well, I, I'm going to advocate for an increase in materials budget, um, but that will depend upon what we see. Um, from the county, but I, I, I think that's absolutely necessary to continue the growth of the library. And we'll talk about that come budget time, though. Um, I think it's fair to, um, given basically stagnant growth in the county at the moment. It's, it's maybe a couple hundred a year. That's not even a percentage. Um. I would just say, um, an increase in library services as opposed to the circulation per se. And then you'd be looking at user visits, you'd be looking at circulation, you'd be looking at all these things.
So users of libraries.
Yes, yeah. I mean, since you said, you know, we're looking at all these things. So ob- obviously, we want to increase the library's presence. Um, I've got an ace up my sleeve I'm not going to tell you about, and the mobile library wasn't counted last year. Um, so, uh, shouldn't have told you that, but uh, um, yeah. So I, I think an increase in the library's overall services. And let's just see where we end up with at the end of the year, factoring all the changes that could happen into it.
Yeah, I would like to set a, some kind of percentage benchmark, whether we meet it or not. I think we need to have some kind of yardstick we're looking for.
So we're saying usage, increased usage of library services across the board.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Measure, and that's measurable.
Meeting, meeting room use, uh, user visits, programming, circulation, the whole thing.
So, increased usage of library services, circulation, user visits, meeting rooms, et cetera. Uh, with a goal of two percent, stretch goal of five percent over calendar year twenty twenty-three. I think I got that wrong. Shouldn't it be twenty twenty-three? Because aren't we comparing it to last year? I feel like I mis-typed.
Oh, oh, I thought it meant like.
For, for my assessment, it is calendar year.
During, was it during calendar year twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, during.
I thought you meant like over as it was happening.
Okay, during calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Um, conduct and evaluate an organizational climate survey in autumn. I think that's an important thing to do. We haven't taken the pulse of our employees directly for some years, really since before COVID. And that is something that would be in my purview. Um, so we conduct the organizational climate survey. And we analyze it. Where are people's satisfactions? Where are people? And of course, you know, um, the, the, the money is likely to be something that they wish they had more of. Um, but what are?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, what are people feeling about the library? We, we haven't done it for years. I want to get back to doing it every other year. One year for staff and the next year for the public. The public are being engaged with a strategic planning process for this year. So I don't feel that that's necessarily as big a concern, but uh, I, I would like to do that this fall.
Any questions or comments about that?
I, I would just change it to calendar year twenty twenty-four. You never know what's going to happen. Michael.
Okay, that's fine.
You do it this year.
Um, I, I, I think that, um, that's just typically when we've done them in the past is the autumn of the year. But if you want to make a calendar year twenty twenty-four, that's fine. Um, my next is prioritize security upgrades with the understanding that implementation measures is often beyond our control. If you just want to say prioritize security upgrades, fine. Um, I, I think that, and if you want to say develop a plan to enhance reasonable security measures, I can give you a plan. Um, all I want to say is that. Uh, the best laid plans of mice and men off gang gly, um, because. As you were discussing earlier, John, oh, what about this cone in the floor? It's been there for years. Um, but I will have something that concrete we can do for security to talk about. Um, you might have noticed on the agenda that the closed session has been expanded to include litigation and security updates.
Okay.
So again, coming back to making it measurable and something that you can be successful in, develop a plan is something you can deliver.
Oh, I'm a.
That, like, that verbiage is important.
I'm a planning kind of guy. Don't worry about that.
Um, but I, I do like Michael's language about prioritize security upgrades. I, we could maybe develop a plan to enhance reasonable and prioritize security measures. I think to me as a board, we need to understand. What are the most important things we need to tackle? And we, of course, cost comes in there, but what are the most important things and how are we going to go about it? And instead of it's, um. Yeah, the plan needs to include priorities, cost, and then, you know. If, obviously, if you prioritize it, but we don't get the money for it, that's one thing, but we know that the effort's been there and that it's been thoughtfully managed.
And I, and I will say that getting Maryland state grants for. Security uh, through the library grants is not going to be a possibility. It could be done as a capital sort of thing, but we've got to match capital funding. And I don't want to start looking at getting capital funds until fiscal year twenty-eight. When we've got a big one, we should be able to do. And that brings us to my next goal. Create plan, hey, look, I'm, I'm creating a plan for you, um, to implement the fiscal year twenty-eight capital funding projects. Already in twenty twenty-five, we're going to have to have an architect. We're going to have to have plans more than likely, because if I'm going to apply in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, you, I would apply in March, but the money doesn't come through for a year and a half. Um, we need to have exactly what we want. We need to, we need to have decided. Yes, and it's so far, it looks like we're going Charlotte Hall. Yes. Here's an architect who will do the plan. Here's, and that will require an RFP, John. Um, here is a, um. Here is the costs. And here, I, I've done these before. I got us one point six million. It's a really involved process, but you've got to have a lot of things upfront. And I've also sat on that committee for the last five years when we weren't looking for money. And I see the competition. There's people out there who do a really good job putting together these proposals. So we need to be ready, and I would like by the end of the calendar year, it's not going to be implemented. But have, here's exactly what we're going to do and when we're going to do it.
I, I think that's a great idea. So let, let me review with the group kind of what I have noted as the list that's emerging. Because I see um, five goals plus the two kind of sub-goals that Michael identified. So. I'm, let's see, should I do this as a motion? I'm going to make a motion to approve the following as the director's goals for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Um, first, we have number two on the board suggestions. Develop a three-year plan for evaluating, not recompeting. Evaluating the library service contracts to ensure the library is getting the best possible cost. We have sub-goals down into Michael's director proposal. Working with the HR and finance coordinator, explore finding a replacement for paychecks payroll HR system. And explore unifying the official name of the organization as Saint Mary's County Library. Next, we have board suggestion number four, edited to say increase usage of library services. Parenthesis, circulation, user visits, meeting rooms, et cetera, uh, during calendar year twenty twenty-four. Goal of two percent, stretch goal of five percent. Next, we have number six, develop a plan to enhance reasonable security measures. And then going down to Michael's, we have the third from the bottom. Conduct and evaluate organizational climate survey in calendar year twenty twenty-four. And finally, create a plan to implement FY twenty-eight capital funding projects.
Was it supposed to be developing plan to enhance and prioritize reasonable security measures? Did we want that in there or not?
Where does the, where does the word prioritize go?
After reasonable. To, to enhance.
And prioritize.
Oh, so before, to enhance and prioritize.
Okay.
Reasonable screening.
Alright, so let me.
Can I go to the last one, though?
Oh, I'm sorry. So that's a motion on the table?
Sorry.
I would like to amend it to add. Back in the increased bilingual resources. The fact that it's already done makes it easy to check off and say that it's good.
I agree.
Okay, I get lost in the preliminary procedure. Uh, Sharon, you threw me for a loop. I don't know what we're doing now. Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody want a second? Okay, Sharon's amendment. Let's discuss Sharon's amendment to bring back the increased bilingual resources.
I think I did not have in mind the collection. I have in mind more like things over this, the sign right here. This is emergency exit signs in English only. These are the things that I'm concerned with. There's a sign in the front of the building instructing parents, which children may come in unaccompanied by parents and which may not. In English only. Those are the things that I'm thinking about. The signage for users of the library. Um, that should be welcoming to the non-English speaking members of the community.
Well.
Yes, and then we do have social media, a lot of flyers. And that's why I like to look at, should they also be in Spanish? Um, the social media presence, can they also be posted in Spanish? I'm not telling you every single thing. But I think it's something that needs to start being attacked and, um. Um, and advertising for events and things. Can they, will they, can they be done in Spanish? But especially the signage around all the buildings. That, and this is stuff that doesn't, that doesn't cost anything. It's a piece of paper. So that's, that's kind of what I had in mind.
Well, and, and I indicated when I was speaking with you that, um, I recognize that there were, those, those areas do need still work. I would just say that we've got a, a good start on the collection. Wasn't saying that the goal was completely done. Um, we do have two, at, at least two bilingual Spanish speakers, but they already have work. So to the extent that which we could get, you know, pre-made things for signage, for example, would be. Would be, you know, better than trying to do in-house stuff. We'll just brand it out, uh, you know, as ours.
Uh, any other discussion before we vote on the amendment? Alright, so let's vote on Sharon's amendment to bring back. Number five of the board suggestions about increasing bilingual resources, such as the collection signage websites and social media communications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay. So now the slate of proposed goals includes all of those things in addition to number five. And we added the word and prioritize to number six.
Okay, I guess I have an amendment. Is that how you said it?
Okay.
I'm thinking about the last one, create a plan to implement the FY twenty-eight capital funding. I'd like to strike the FY twenty-eight. I feel like we should always have a capital funding plan. It's not specific to one year. And some years it may have many things on it, some years it may drop off. But I don't know why we wouldn't always have capital funding projects coming down the line somewhere.
While true, this is the goals for twenty twenty-four. So I think that scoping the goal for twenty twenty-four to be the twenty twenty-eight plan is not unreasonable. With the understanding that next year, we'd be looking at what kind of capital funding plan needed to be in place or beyond that.
Now, I'm following you. You're saying that the twenty-eight is the first year we could do a capital.
No, 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 the, the, uh, Judith, I'm sorry, just to remind you, in, in fiscal year twenty-eight. The county has set aside three point five million dollars in capital funding for the library. And we want to get at least an additional one million, and I'm hoping for two. And so that's the reason for the emphasis on fiscal year twenty-eight. It's not that we don't want to do capital projects every year. It's that that's a big one coming up, and we want to prepare for that one specifically. So, um, this does not preclude doing anything for capital next year or, you know, during twenty twenty-four. For, uh, resources allowing, it's that we know we're going to get this influx. We've got to have a lot of preparation in place to be successful to get one million or possibly two million in grants.
There's some low hanging fruit in terms of short-term capital provisions that we can put out there that you're working. While we're also working towards the big one.
I, I think for the sake of goal setting, this is by far not the only thing Michael's going to be busy with for the next year. To me, the goal is okay as written, knowing that it's a one-year goal under these specific circumstances. I think it makes sense the way he's laid it out.
I agree. Okay. So can I withdraw my amendment? Is that proper?
Sure.
Okay.
That was a helpful conversation.
Okay.
Withdrawn for lack of a second. Thank you, John. Alright, all in favor of approving the director goals as we have outlined, please say aye.
Aye.
As amended. Thank you, John.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay. Alright, I will clean up this document and recirculate it. Okay, let us move into new trustee business. Um, in terms of new business, I know Michael wanted to talk about this Bolton letter, so if you want to get us started.
Yes, I, I, you know, uh, you, you felt some hostility from me earlier and, and I wish to apologize for that. I have a, um, people do watch these meetings and the discussion about the OPEB fund has become contentious at times. And my sense is that this is the time we need everybody on the same page, all presenting a positive picture of the library and all working towards trying to increase our funding for next year. I got this letter from Bolton, our actuary, just to indicate what your obligations are for this OPEB account. I'm not suggesting any action for it at all. Just to let you know that there's no immediate hurry. You don't have to take money this year from our budget for it. And I'd like us to develop a plan starting next fiscal year for how to handle this. And that could include depending on whether or not we get a funding increase from the county, money that we would set aside for it to go into it. And that we, with this letter in mind, simply ratchet that conversation down until June, when we're going to know what money we're getting. And then you decide as part of your budget process next year, what you'd like to do about funding the OPEB. But this, I think, clearly indicates what our responsibilities are. You know, one of the options you mentioned, I'm not advocating for it at all, please understand, is that we could at this point say it's worth 1.4 million dollars, for the next 14 years, we're taking a hundred thousand dollars out of it, and that's that. That would be acceptable to do. I'm not advocating that. I'm not saying don't fund the OPEB. I just want us to stop talking about it. Please don't talk about taking money this fiscal year for it. And let's get through the fiscal year and plan for next year, and we will happily work with you on the best way to try to fund this.
Thank you, Michael. Any comments or questions? Okay, thanks, John. I think as we get closer to the end of this current fiscal year, I think we can pick up the conversation. Um, I think Michael has a lot of good thoughts on this front, and we'll go from there. Other new business people want to raise before we move into closed session?
Um, I have one quick point. I just wanted to point out this for you. This comes from Library IQ. As you can see, they branded it. So we're starting to see the results and we're looking at a database that they're creating, uh, and it's got some really fascinating stuff about the diversity of our collection in it. And I've asked them to price out what it would cost to continue using it, because a number of staff are really liking it. But I just thought this was really interesting. Of 100 people that visit St. Mary's County Library versus the Maryland libraries in general, six will attend a program, two of whom will be children, 15 will use a computer, and 79 will check out a book or other item. And then they know that many visits are all free, or certainly the program and the, the book. We know when people come with their children, they usually will go out with about 50 books, and that's great. So just that as further argument for if we can increase the materials budget, that's the reason why people are coming here still. So I'd like us to consider that for the future. If you compare it to the average Maryland library, 26 attend a program, 11 use a computer, and 63 check out a book or other item. So clearly our users are are prioritizing the collection in many cases more than most Maryland libraries see. I'm surprised at that number for the programs, and I want them to revise that and say, what's going on here? But it indicates to me that in many cases, other libraries that are that are funded, and I'm looking at you, Calvert, and Charles, a little better than us, have the option for more staff can offer more programs. So that's also an area where if we can do some increases, I'd really like to see us working just in terms of how we're thinking about the budget. So, um, I just think that it's interesting that we are getting, you know, hard data and can start making data-driven decisions about how we want to prioritize things.
And there's a lot to be proud of in here. Incredible work.
So I, I did have a closed session, and for the first two items of it, the library staff can stay, um, if they wish to, they don't have to. The, um, the board would be listed on your document, Michael, you need to list that you've got people watching there. But the, the third one, which is the director's annual review, um, we all will leave for. The first I want to talk about is some security updates, and you've directed me to do those, and we've started. I'm sorry, oh, yeah, please.
I, I, I have to, we have to move to go into closed session.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, alright, so I will make a motion to move into closed session, um, to talk about matters under section three dash 305B one, eight, and 10. Can I get a second? Okay, thank you, Sharon. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, we will move into closed session. Thanks, everybody.